This conference will now be recorded.
Well, we'll call the meeting. I don't, I believe we have any guests right now. So we'll start with the mayor's report if you're ready.
Okay. A ton of social media. St. Thomas had expressed that they are not interested in running the Easter egg hunt moving forward, that they're willing to help, but they're looking for someone else because it does not fit their, the current message that they're trying to do. So we'll need to, if we're going to bring back an Easter egg hunt in 2021, we're going to need to look for some other sources to help us with that. Quickly jumping down through. The, the police department's computers, the upgrade is finally finished. I did sign a proclamation for bells across Pennsylvania Day. Donations, we've received $375 in donations so far for the parade. We sent out, I think it was 100 and just shy of 170 letters asking for donations. So we have 440 in flags. I'd like to order some flags so as they wear out during the summer, we can get those put up. But then the question becomes, what do we do about the parade? Speaking with Milford, he had said that he would still like to have a private ceremony of about four people in the park to do taps. I told him we could livestream that on social media and I would ask the fire department and the police department if they would go through the borough with a flag on their vehicles prior to that, just to kind of bring some awareness. I also have a list of the people who, some people who have been deceased, who fought in the wars in Burnsville and I'm posting their biographies online each week leading up to Memorial Day. My thoughts are if we still have Community Day for August 1 is to begin it with a parade through Burnsville and then have the Memorial Day service in the park to start off Community Day. So I thought I'd ask you guys for your thoughts on that.
It's fine by me. I mean, everybody's all right with it. No problem with it.
I don't see any issues with it.
Okay. The only other thing I have was, and I don't know if you want to do it now Danny or later, the wellness checklist for the police department.
Okay, go ahead.
Basically what it is, is it's a policy that states if you have a fever of 99.5 or higher, cough, sore throat, shortness of breath, or any other symptoms of COVID-19, that you would not be able to work. It also states that if you've been diagnosed with COVID-19 or in the past 14 days, been in close proximity of someone else, that you would not be able to work and it outlines the procedures for you to be able to return to work. Recommendation coming back from the CDC and the Pennsylvania Mayor's Association is you have the police department to wear face masks. But that seems to be met with resistance by our chief of police. So I kind of wanted to get some input and thoughts on, on what, if any, policy we should adopt.
I mean, if he's out of the car, you know, if he's in the car in the office, it's not a big deal. But if he's out in the public, he's pretty much gonna have to wear one.
Yeah. So my understanding is he's currently not.
Yeah. So I think when he's going into Redners or walking the streets or whatever, he should probably have a mask on.
Right. I can't.
So I, I don't know. You know, I, I believe I can adopt this policy for the police department, but, but I would feel much better knowing that I had the support of council or if council doesn't believe it's necessary, you know, to have that conversation as well.
Essentially, essentially right now, going into a public business, you, it's a state order. So I'm not understanding why he's disobeying a state order versus a thorough policy or even the mayor coming up with a policy. That shouldn't be a question right now. It's not an option. And then the only thing about that policy, I'm trying to find, you said it Sean, you said that if they come in contact, I mean, essentially it could get to the point that we're in contact all the time. So for them not to come to work because of being in contact, I don't know how we want to word that because if we're running, he's running a medical call. He technically has contacts. So therefore he doesn't have to come to work for 14 days. Do you kind of get what I'm getting at with that?
Yeah. And that's, and that's why they said was within 16 feet, I'm sorry, within six feet for greater than a 10 minute period of time with someone who is diagnosed. But you know, I'm game for whatever additional wording or however you'd like to change it.
But I'm, I'm game with that, the six foot, I said 10 minutes. I believe that's, I believe that's the standard. That's what they defined as.
It is.
You know, close proximity to be doing exposure. I know, I know that's how, I know that's how it is down in my work.
The only thing that I did not follow the exact wording up from the CDC was the temperature of 99.5. And we, my, my hopes is to get a contactless thermometer for the police department. And they take surface temperatures, not internal temperatures. So they're off by one degree when you take a surface temperature versus an internal temperature. So that's why that is one degree lower than the recommendation by the CDC.
Same that says six inches, active social distancing of six inches.
Where do I have that? Did I put six inches?
Number three under.
Well, that's kind of embarrassing, isn't it, Michelle? I will get that fixed.
Whatever.
No, no, I appreciate that no one read it. So I will get that fixed. Oh, Wesley also sent a message as well that I'm a moron. Okay. Yep, I'll get that. And then finally Danny, the only other thing I have is the police reports. For the month of March, two reports of domestic disturbance, an attempted suicide and a disorderly conduct at the Burnsville Car Wash. The streetlights at Third and Homestead and the light at the 200 block of Homestead and 400, and the 400 block of Third Street do not come on all the way.
Did you report them already? Well, I'll get a list.
Yeah. They're, they're, they're in the police report for the month. There's also four signs that read no parking on the 300 block of Homestead Avenue that need to be replaced. For the month of April, one report of domestic disturbance and one complaint of open burning. And that's pretty much it for the police reports. I did not receive one for the month of April. I did not receive in May the report for April. So the only other thing I'd like to do is I also just want to make sure that we thank Snyder's and their family of companies and Burnsville Fire Company for everything that they did for the community on Saturday.
Tom, Sean, or did I miss?
I'm sorry Danny.
I didn't know if you said something and missed it or something. That's all right.
Nope, that was it for me.
All right. Justin, do you want our employees to put them signs up? Were those the ones that you were gonna do?
I, I mean, if it's something they, they'd like to do, they can. Unfortunately, I was waiting for the time. By using my vehicle, of course, I can't fit it pretty much any size ladder in my Equinox. So that was gonna be put on hold till I had means of having to pick up truck, pretty much transport a ladder back there and replace them. While I was at it, I was gonna replace some of the signs, but also reduce some of the signs that are up there from the current five. I don't think there's a need for. But I mean, we can definitely get them up and do that out of late date. Like I said, I just couldn't do it right now. And that was before the, the new folks were hired. So.
Do you want us to contact them? Do you want to contact them or?
I can get his phone number. I can get his phone number from someone. I mean, I can definitely contact him. It doesn't matter. It, I can do it. It doesn't matter.
Our text number.
Go ahead.
Chris, did you have anything you wanted to bring up? Jason, sorry. All right. Lucas. Wesley.
So I think some of you know, but Marceline just stepped down from doing the newsletter in the end of February. And we did not put out a newsletter for this quarter because it's seems silly to put out a newsletter that when everything was canceled in March, April, and probably most of June. But Michelle Kaminsky from the borough is interested. She is a professional writer and editor. So I think if it's okay with council, we'll have her take over while Marceline didn't putting it together. The other thing is that we did hire new, two new parks employees. And I apologize to Lucas and Jason about not getting together with them to meet, but it was kind of done very quickly and due to COVID, we didn't get to talk to them in person. So it was all done over the phone. But with the warm weather, we needed the grass mode and such earlier than usual. And that's all I have.
I got a list of the motions. We'll, we'll get back to that and we'll do them all at one. Is Gary on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm using my phone. So, cause I have a docking station on my computer. So I guess I'll have to figure out the new technology, but I have nothing. Apart from thanks for taking care of basketball and that seemed like it did the trick. Because there was like a couple of weekends in a row where there was a bunch of people at the park, you know, playing basketball for quite a few hours. So it seemed like since that was done, it took care of people getting together and stuff, you know, playing, playing basketball.
All right. Justin, did you have anything that you wanted to bring up or good?
I did not know. That was on my list was those signs up there.
I know Justin did have Snyder's out and they did patch some bottles for us. Oh, that was a month ago. Hey, two months ago.
Yeah, it's actually been a while ago. I actually forgot about that. Yeah, they, they tried to get the larger ones.
I mean, it was in the midst of all this. So. Right. I think they got pretty much all, hearing complaining or see any personally.
No, yeah. No, yeah. All, all the ones that I, that I was aware of, I seen were done. Many, and he said there was the remainder of the patch was back there. So if we see any, in the meantime, we can pretty much knock them out right away.
Right. Okay. Michelle, did you have anything that you wanted to bring up or any?
Are we still going to hire, looking into hiring more police officers? It's up and tabled.
Question. We never, well, we did, they quit and kind of just kind of hang there. I guess we never really did do any.
Well, we had received those applications. And then they did interview, nobody was hired from those interviews, right Sean?
Yes. And then I believe we had last left it off that we were asking the solicitor what the requirements were for advertising again. Did we need to only do it for one month? Could we advertise it on the website? Could the ad in the legal journal just say now hiring and then refer them to the website?
Did we not get an answer?
And the attorney had said yes.
I believe that's where we left off. Yes.
Yeah, I thought Sean wrote on the website.
Yeah. So after the meeting, you, you had looked into it and said, that's what the solicitor said. But then we never had a meeting since then to move forward to do it.
Gotcha.
I mean, I'm perfectly fine putting it on the website, but I didn't want to just take the initiative to do that on my own without council's permission.
Do we need a motion for that?
Or just do it by motion.
That included for, did that include like holding the app for a year?
Yes.
Yeah, we had already previously that we were keeping applications on file.
Would you like to make a motion for that, Michelle?
I know that we advertise for candidates.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Who was that?
Wesley.
Wesley?
I don't.
Let the coin Brenda. Get it to Wesley.
No fighting over. All right. Did you have anything else, Michelle, or are you done? Only thing right now with the sewer going on is we got our bids back to do our project. For the mining and the whole bunch of good stuff. I think that's in our my list here. So we'll get to that when we get to the motions. But basically we're gonna advertise the, the workout and where we stand. Hopefully by the time we're out of this, we can get be ready to move ahead with the work. Oh, not there really isn't much. I mean, I did meet with park employees and stuff and showed them what to do and this and that. There's a lot of weed whack and still at the park there. I'll ask them about it. Get to each other own. How would you say area of the mo, but they can each help each other. They just need to let each other know if they need help or whatever. And the other thing that John Kissling asked me to bring up was about the fire company run cards. That they did a little change to them. They are, do change to them. Correct me if I'm wrong, Justin. He said you looked at them. What I was told is Main Street's gonna, when they call for a fire, they're gonna go with the ladder truck for all main because of the high buildings and the apartments. I think the wire factory, Redners and I can't think of the other one he told me. He told me.
Uh, should be the wire factory, renters, the churches.
The churches.
Yeah. And pretty much a majority of Main Street down through. Wasn't, wasn't a lot of changes, just a difference in some of the apparatus that are gonna be on our resource lists coming to town here and reducing the responses on some of our assignments as far as the, the number of apparatus that'll come to town here. Nothing, it's nothing major. They'll draw up the cards and I mean, I can sit them down at. I'd say sit them down at Borough Hall if anybody wants to take a look at them, grab them or whatnot, but.
Yeah, basically John wanted. What was that Justin? I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say unfortunately, if it's not something you're familiar with, it might just look like a bunch of nonsense. I mean, but if anybody wants to look at has any questions, we can gladly explain it and what's going on.
Right. He said he'd get a printed copy too for us to look at. And if there's any questions, if anybody want, basically what Justin said, anybody wants to look at it or has questions about it, feel free to ask. But he didn't want to hold it up for another month. I guess he wanted to change it, you know, relatively soon.
You said they are at Borough Council? Justin, you've seen them?
Oh, I, I, I personally have seen them, but they are not printed out yet.
Yeah, he said ambulance run cars all stay the same, but it's just Main Street, basically the wire factory and Redners and stuff. I guess he's getting a ladder truck from Womel's door. It's gonna be on call. Wasn't changed or something?
Yeah, yeah. Right, right now, uh, for a structured fire assignment in town, the only ladder that comes right now is Quinn 30, which is Mount Pleasant's ladder down the street. They're gonna be adding ladder 47 from Womel's door to that entire, that entire area there. I like said, I mean, there's, there's a few other changes. Nothing drastic. Few changes as far as the order in which our assisting companies come in to assist. But noth- nothing drastic.
While we're on that subject, actually, the mailing went out for Bethel and of course, we had this conversation last year as well on trying to educate the public that Bethel ambulance is not our ambulance service for Burnsville Borough. I don't know if there's something we want to put on our Facebook page and say, try to get Western Berks involved in that. But all ultimately, Western Berks is Burnsville Borough's primary. And I know that it was sent out to, I believe every Burnsville resident again asking for their membership.
Wow. Yeah. Maybe Sean can put that on our website.
Sure. I can post it.
Also, I know I got mine, but I don't know how those are addressed. They were actually addressed to the, the addresses or if those are just addressed to.
Individuals.
I have mine.
Yeah, I think it was just postal customer.
That, that's how I was kind of thinking it was. And then the post ops just is distributing them.
Michelle just said she has her.
Okay.
She went to go get it.
Local postal customer. Yeah, but I didn't know. I give money all the time. I give more money to Burnsville if I, you know, the right one, if I knew.
And, and, and that's, and that's the thing I fear too, that, that a lot of the folks, a lot of folks don't realize who, who their primary ambulance service is. That's right here in town. Oh, that is gonna be Western Berks coming over. And especially times like this when, you know, funds are tight. Especially a lot of the older population are the ones described in that stuff. I, I just don't want to see somebody paying for something and then not get a service that they thought they were paying for because they paid the wrong one for the service.
That's definitely worth putting in the newsletter too. Me, I've been paying for years. I don't know who I'm paying and why, but you know.
Yeah. I mean, if they want to give them to them yet, that's fine. But if, you know, if they want to know they're covered too, that's. Okay.
Justin, can I ask you, somebody, nobody ever answers the, a fire company answering machine. Like if you leave a message, you never get a call back. Cause I had a check that had.
Is the answering machine even turned on right now? I, I don't believe the, the machine's actually even turned on right now. Because that was the problem. Fortunately, very few people even were checking that answering machine, except for myself. And I got to the point where I couldn't do it every day. Last I knew, the answering machine was actually turned off.
Well, is there a way that we can post somebody to contact? Because I know my neighbor tried to contact them and I had a check that wasn't cashed. I mean, it's, you know, I just don't want to text them a friend because for something like that, doesn't seem quite right. Want to be able to contact the fire company directly.
You're talking about the fire company right, not Jefferson storage, right?
Correct. Fire company.
Because I actually had a couple insurance companies call that they wanted John Kissling and they were leaving messages they said and couldn't get through at the fire company. And I gave them, what is it? 6532 or something? The number down there.
Uh, 6592.
Yeah.
Yeah, 486592.
No, 6592. I gave them the right number. I just I knew it was close.
Yeah, like I said, honestly, I don't even know if the answering machine's turned on right now. I, I was once checking all, all the messages in the past. And it got to the point where that was only being done on a, you know, semi weekly basis. Unfortunately, but there's, there's times that nobody's in this building, nobody's in that building for days, a week at a time. Unless, unless there's a call.
Okay. We're gonna move ahead to the motions for the the last couple of months, I guess. First of all, we'll start with the motion to approve February 4 meeting minutes.
I will make that motion.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody vote. Motion to approve accounts payable dated March 1st to April 7.
I'll make the motion.
We have a second?
I'll make a second. Gary.
All in favor? And a motion to approve the charge report as of February 28. That's subject audit.
Motion.
Motion.
I'll second.
All favor? We have, uh, motion to approve May fifth, accounts payable.
Brenda, um, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Never mind, I'm too early, nope, I'm good. Enjoy that.
Now motion to do that, approve May fifth, accounts payable. Who was that?
Justin and Jason.
Just. We'll put Justin and Jason in a second, is that, is that alright?
Yep.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have the motion to approve profit and loss subject audit.
Um, should we be concerned about the bounce check for the sewer fund for eight hundred and six dollars?
Not real. That was, uh, two people, I think, two people who paid their bill that respect was returned. And actually one wrote out of the wrong bank account and the other one he just had insufficient fund, but he took care of it then right away.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they were both taken care of.
Any other questions or? We have motion to approve them, accept them?
Motion.
The second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye. Aye.
I missed the motion to approve treasurer's report for March thirty first. I thought we did that one, oh, I did the other one, sorry, so March thirty first, treasurer's report.
Motion.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
And here's the motion to advertise of the sewer bid specs on May eleventh and awarded at June second, did we change June second?
It's gonna be June second meeting.
June second meeting will be, they're open and awarded. Meeting for twenty twenty in, an infiltration inspection repair project. We have a motion advertising.
I will make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And we need a motion to hire
Julio.
Julio. And Ashley Strunk to parks and borough maintenance position at a rate of thirteen twenty-five an hour.
I'll make the motion.
I will second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I will abstain to the my daughter. Then we need a motion to adopt resolution number zero five, zero five, two, zero, two, zero, to extend the real estate tax plat rate deadline to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Motion.
I think this.
Lucas?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Then we need a motion to extend the rental inspection until July third due to the COVID nineteen. That's just for completion date.
They were supposed to be done by April thirtieth, but with everything going on, they can't. And it might have to get extended again, who knows? Jim would just like to get them done as soon as possible, so he said, let's just start with July thirty first.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And then we need a motion to advertise the borough's financial statements year end two thousand nineteen.
That's the audit, the audit was finished the end of February, I believe, yeah, and now we need to advertise it in the newspaper.
Awesome, on the website too, if you're willing to do that.
But we need a motion to advertise it in the paper.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? And I think this is the last one, oh, no, yeah, she made the motion for this. Motion authorize auditor Brian to enter the journal entries for year ending two thousand nineteen.
I don't know, he, he said it done in a few minutes. We just need a motion always, that he's changing.
There's a line in number two, it'll change. I know a couple of things we want to get rid of off of our list, that's all he's doing. We have a motion to that.
I will make a motion.
I'll second it, Gary.
Second? All favor? Anybody opposed? The computer. We need most, right, too. The computers off, are you writing, nevermind.
I gave everybody a copy of all the reports, which include the account listings, Motley's reports, uh, the sewer engineer reports, all the water and sewer reports from Select, and you should have them from this month and last month. I emailed all that stuff, uh, and that's really all I have.
We did have a few questions on the water testing because our bills seem to be, have gotten.
It's just because at that time of the year for annual bills, like I said, or for annual testing, because monthly, we only have to do test for one or two things, but annually it's a lot they have to test for.
I just know.
Mike Kreiser from Select said that's why it's the annual testing.
I just know our bill was like a thousand bucks for it now, and, and I didn't know it got back to you.
And then I'm sure I'm misreading the reports, but the supplemental reports all say this permit will expire February twenty eighth, twenty nineteen.
Discharge permit.
Yes, all, all, all of the permits.
Yeah. Well, he was work, he was drawing that. To be in a N P V S report.
Is that the N P V S?
Yeah, the discharging.
Yeah, that, that was just renewed.
I was gonna say, he just.
It says to renew it a hundred and eighty days prior, but it says it expires, expired a year ago.
Yeah, he has the wrong.
That's wrong, because I know he just said it not that long.
That's on all of the reports.
Well, we'll have to tell him to check his dates, Mike. He probably didn't change it.
I mean, I, you know, how do I say it? I, it's not important, it doesn't matter, but I just don't want us to get spanked by the Commonwealth because they, we didn't file the correct report.
Right, well, we filed it, he doesn't have the correct date in.
Is that on the select environment report?
Um, no, this is the supplemental report for daily affluent monitoring, the supplemental report for, um, process controls, um.
Yeah, that's why.
Yeah, because I just got a email from the state that's saying due to the COVID they're working for, I guess, so it was approved, but yet I don't have anything in writing or anything except for the email, I don't have the actual yeah, so off the call.
He's that he had made.
And not changed it, didn't change it.
Right. That's big catch though, because we're filing and it must be, be, that needs to be right.
Yeah, if I can't believe the E P them.
Yeah, I can't believe it, and yeah, we'll have to have them change it. We might have to go back to changes, honestly. Right? Anything else or anybody have anything? Done? Brenda's texting you the message, or their phone number now, Justin? So there's nothing else, I guess we got a motion, motion to adjourn, if you will.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alright.